It's Monday, January 4th, 2016. In the absence of Mayor Morley as clerk, I will call the meeting to order of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 7:31 it looks like to me. So please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which exists, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As clerk, I'll call the roll to see if we have a quorum. Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Holmsky.
Here.
York, absent, Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent. I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Alderman Mulliner, our longest-serving Alderman, to serve as mayor pro temp for tonight's meeting. Do I have someone to move? Wagner and second by Alderman Bram. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimous.
I'm gonna stay here to start this.
You wanna stay here? There?
You have to go up here. Your papers are up here.
I'm walking all the way back here.
Your papers are up here. Don't ruin this script.
Okay. We're always good. That brings it to an end.
Second item on the agenda this evening is the presentation of a check by Metro Paramedics. This is something that's done on an annual basis based on our contract, and we're gonna come over here to this podium and to the side and do a presentation.
Oh, I thought you wanted to do the whole meeting there.
Good evening, everyone. Alderman from the city of Elmhurst. Today we're here to present the city of Elmhurst with a check in the amount of $153,092.64. This is from our 2013-2014 fiscal year budget. For those who are not aware or familiar with our contract, Metro Paramedics is a subsidiary of Superior Ambulance, which is based right here in Elmhurst. We provide two advanced life-supporting ambulances, 12 paramedics, and as part of the contractual agreement, the city pays 10% subsidy while we assume the risk of collecting 90% of our contract money through EMS billing receivables. So for those patients that call the ambulance, we provide turnkey services, including two ambulances, the paramedics and EMS billing services. We bill the patients based on fees established by the city council, and once we reach our contractual amount, any amount collected above and beyond is refunded to the city. So tonight, we're happy to present the city of Elmhurst with a check for approximately $153,000.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
On behalf of the city of Elmhurst, thank you. This is one of the best contracts that we have, and I really appreciate this contract and hope we can keep it going for a long period of time. This will certainly help us. Thank you very much.
But I could add one more thing, too. We just purchased a new ambulance, and we just put it in service at the city of Elmhurst. So for those of you who haven't seen it, it is at station number two. It's a brand-new ambulance, and I encourage everyone to check it out. It's pretty slick.
But not righted. But I hope the number isn't from the outside.
Thank you.
You already said, "Don't try to get out."
Cash isn't worth it. The check isn't worth it.
We see a driver's license for that check.
Next item on the agenda is public forum. I'm sorry, written communications. Is anyone of any written communications, if they'd like to present it this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. City clerk?
Yes, Mayor Pro Temp, Kendra Thompson, 204 East Crescent Avenue.
You know the rules. It's three minutes, and I'll give you a warning ahead of time.
Okay, thank you. Kendra Thompson, 204 East Crescent Avenue, Elmhurst. Hello. I'm here again tonight to support York Commons Detention Pond. I've been coming to these meetings for about two and a half years, and I was very hopeful to see the IGA passed and signed by both the city and the Elmhurst Park District for York Commons. However, in your December 22nd meeting with the park district, a shut-off valve was brought up and seems to have derailed the agreement. To quote the Suburban Life January 4th article, "The deal fell through December 22nd when the park districts requested a $100,000 shut-off valve that city engineers have said is unnecessary." I cannot tell you how disappointing this is for residents on Crescent Avenue. One meeting, we hear the park district wants to start construction before the 2016 pool session, and the next meeting, the deal fell through, to again quote the Suburban Life. I'm not pointing fingers at either entity, but when will this grappling be over and we get this detention pond started? Please keep the momentum going with this project and try to get this done by Memorial Day 2016. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have who's signed in tonight.
Does anyone else in the audience want to speak in public forum?
Paula Wolf, 444 North Larch. I was just wondering if you all got a look at the Suburban Life this week? Top story for 2016 is our flooding issue, and I think it's very embarrassing that it's out there. I don't know how you all feel about it, but this has just been going on so long. And as Kendra said, you know, a lot of people were thinking they were gonna get some relief from York Commons, and now we're stalled again. How long can the residents be ignored? I'm not saying by city council. I might be thinking more the park district wanting more than they should have or need, but it's both of you working together as it is with the school board. We really need help. Spring is around the corner, believe it or not. Another thing that came up over the holidays was the lack of the Christmas lights on York Road. I don't know if this was to save money, but it kind of took the Christmas out of Christmas a little bit, and if you want to save money, rethink the trolley. It's very expensive, and I don't think even 10% of the Elmhurst population used it, so I don't see the need for it. Lot of biking, walking, and we all have cars because we have a big parking garage to use Another thing that kind of bothers me is, I was told by my Alderman that it was a good thing that we were getting the Thornton's gas station because it would keep our taxes down. Also, in this past publication, taxes are going up, and we're still stuck with Thornton's. What is that doing for the north side of Elmhurst? Is everything just kind of concentrated on York, Addison, First through Third? I think we're really getting short-changed, and we need better representation. So one other thing I was hoping you could address and tell us tonight is what is going to go on at the big meeting on the 7th? How is that gonna be conducted? You're saying you want input from residents, ideas. How are we gonna do that? Because we can get up and speak here, but we don't have any back-and-forth conversation, and I was wondering if it's gonna be different for that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claude Pogach, 566 West Gladys. Interesting year. Council passed a new budget. Said the people don't understand, we're financially stable. Next meeting, seven and a half percent increase in water bill, 8% increase in water treatment. That does mean we're financially stable. Voted in without knowing what the DuPage Water Commission was gonna do, but lo and behold, they raised it 5%. So here I am, 13% increase in water, all for a good cause. Is it? Well, we're talking about flooding tonight, so we might as well get it over and done. Wouldn't you had a council took offense to what the park district did? Why? They listen to these meetings. You give away millions of dollars to your partners. Don't even think about it. Give away millions of dollars where to land. Don't even think about it. Got the residents. They'll pay. Put a piece of paper up in the air and say, "Oh, but our partners on the garage need $89,000." I'll give it to them. Maybe that's why. If you're gonna give it away, they might as well get their share. All that malarkey about, "Oh, they're all concerned, and you're concerned." That's all it is. It's just a story. You didn't compare, the city didn't worry about it years ago, they ain't worried about it now. Residents have come and said, "Well, why don't you help us after flooding?" "Oh, we can't do that." No, you can't. And according to the federal government, I got a little letter, "I'm not gonna get another nickel." But you guys are taking a bigger and bigger hunk out of the residents of this town, and your residents yourself amaze me. And it isn't gonna stop, is it? Somebody bought the hardware store, and what did the first thing they do? Walked right over to the city and said, "We'd like $60,000." Do I believe you're not gonna give it to them? I think you're gonna give them that and more. And then he's gonna come back, and he's gonna want a share in the sales tax, and you're gonna give it to them. For my benefit. What benefit?
You have three minutes. Could you wrap it up, please?
So just continue the way you're going, gentlemen. Oh, yeah, one thing, Mayor. Federal government just put out something. They said it would cost, based on last year's cost of living, over $225,000 to raise one child to the age of 18. So next time you start voting in increases for the residents, just think what it costs them to raise one child.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements that they would like make at this point? Seeing no announcements, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything for voting no or has any concerns about anything? I asked for a motion to Alderman Healy, Alderman Deuter. Second. Okay. Call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Holmsky.
Aye.
York, absent, Toledo.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. That item passes. We'll move on to reports and recommendations. Does anyone have any reports? Okay. I have one report that I'd like to make, just so that everybody's aware there is. I just kind of fallen into the area of announcements as well. I suppose this Thursday, there was an open house concerning the downtown that will begin at 7 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Oh, sorry, 6 o'clock here in the chamber. So this Thursday, 6 o'clock here in the chamber, talking about the downtown plan.
Thank you. Just a couple more details on that. It runs 6 to 9 p.m. with a presentation at 7 p.m. on the plane. So there'll be an open house period before the presentation, presentation of Bowser Levine, and then an open house period after the presentation. Two other items, just as a reminder to people, and both of these items are on our website. The Christmas tree disposal, we picked up over the next three weeks, common question that we get this time of the year. So with the regular garbage, Christmas tree pickup will happen. And then the last item is that in the current budget, there was a position that was approved for the business development coordinator, and I think the council should have received an email earlier today that we have promoted an employee who has been in that position part-time over the past year, who was also deputy clerk, and that's Erin Vanderwall. We're happy to announce that she has been promoted to the full-time position of business development coordinator. This is a position that is a crucial part of the economic development team, which we talked about in the budget time, working on economic development initiatives, working with existing businesses to retain them, working to identify and attract new businesses. She'll be working with our internal staff on communications, with the local papers, working on programs, as I said, to recruit new businesses, creating opportunities, sites, visiting potential businesses, looking at incentives, all those type of things to help fill all of the stores and retain the folks that are part of the community now. So we're happy to announce that, and I know that Clerk Spencer has some comments as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clerk Spencer?
Mayor, I'd just like to say tonight, the city council approved Sheila York as deputy clerk, and city manager just announced that Erin Vanderwall accepted the full-time position of business development coordinator. I would like to congratulate Sheila, she's out there tonight, little wave, and wish Erin the best of luck on her new position. I look forward to working with deputy clerks Ellen Ciprian and Sheila York. Thank you.
Any other reports? Okay. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to stormwater and projects, I just wanted to highlight to everyone that the project that was undertaken at Webster Avenue to protect the six homes there, which is just a little bit east of Sandburg Junior High, has been completed and is online. There's still some work to do for putting in grass and getting the greenery in place, but right now, that area is fully protected to the 100-year level of protection. So just happy to report that that's done and online. Thanks.
Terrific. That's good news. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other reports, we'll move on to resolutions. We have one resolution. City clerk, could you read the title?
R-134-2015, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Elmhurst Park District for the construction, operation, and maintenance of stormwater improvements in York Commons Park, Elmhurst, DuPage County, Illinois.
Okay, before we put this on the floor for discussion, just a couple of quick comments because of the Open Meetings Act issue with this. This will not be voted on this evening, but we will have an opportunity to have a brief discussion about it. And now I ask for a motion to put it on the floor. Alderman Kennedy, second. Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give you everybody the background, we met at the last meeting to discuss this resolution, and there was a modification made, an amendment, to remove the requirement for the shut-off valve, and that was voted on by all of us. And then we pulled it at that point and deferred it to this evening because at that time, there was still a question related to the indemnification of the project and in terms of whose responsibility it would be for the performance of the shut-off valve. I'll try and do justice to it, and I'll ask city attorney Starino to jump in. As I understand, conversations have been had between legal representation of the city and the park district, and is there feeling that regardless of who would require the shut-off valve, it would be the city's responsibility to provide the indemnification for the project? I'll ask city attorney.
That's correct.
Okay.
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. Since we're at this point and we're not at a position to vote on this tonight, I would ask that we would defer this to two weeks, or actually, two weeks and a day, to Tuesday the 19th, when we meet at our next full city council meeting. As a side note to that, I think one of our crucial questions we have is the requirement for the shut-off valve and truly its necessity. And what I've asked city staff and city manager to do is to have representation from Christopher Burke to come in for a committee of the whole meeting next Monday at 6:30, ahead of our individual committee meetings, so that Christopher Burke can come in, give all of us an overview of the project, including in that his professional knowledge as to why the project can be engineered without the requirement of a shut-off valve and provide the level of protection that's being sought for not only the folks that are on Crescent, who are directly benefiting from this project, but also anyone downstream of York Commons who obviously would be having a potential effect from this. So that's where we stand, and if anything else...
So you've got a motion on the floor to have it deferred to a date certain?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Is there a second for that? There's a second. Alderman Deuter. Any discussion of deferring this to a date certain?
Could you please clarify, since I was not present at the meeting on the 21st, can you clarify what the vote will be on the 19th or whatever the date certain is? What specifically will we be voting on at that meeting? Because I thought you just said that the vote that we had on the 21st, the 11 members that were present that night voted to remove the shut-off valve from the IGA. So I just need a little bit of clarification on what we will be voting on on the 19th.
The vote on the 19th actually will be on an amendment to either replace what we removed or leave it as exists. It has to be one of the two. We can either leave... We voted last meeting on the 21st to amend the resolution and approve it, the IGA, with the removal of the valve. On the 19th, we will either vote to affirm that decision, or we will put the valve back in, and then we will move it forward. But this will move forward on the 19th, one of two ways.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. In regards, and this is pretty much looking at the information we received from city manager Grabowski earlier today, but I wanted the residents to know that even though there has been a logistics delay in regards to moving this resolution forward, it is my understanding, and anybody on the dais can correct me, including you, city manager, that there has not been any delay in design or moving the actual implementation of the project forward. So all those actions are still going on behind the scenes with the assumption that this will move forward in the near term. So there's no impact in regards to the schedule for this detention area at York Commons from the engineering perspective.
That is correct. There's no delay at all in the process. It's just this little hiccup that we have here, which we'll get through. Alderman Levin?
I understand the motion is to defer to a date certain, but is there any... I'm not sure, was there an update that we're going to get about the discussions between the park district and the city, or is that not going to occur until the date certain if the motion passes?
If the motion passes, those discussions will occur on that date, on the 19th. I believe that the idea behind the movement was that this would give us an opportunity to have a committee of the whole meeting where we could have an opportunity to hear from an engineer specifically who has told us the valve is not necessary, and then what we would do at that point, if we agreed with that, is we would direct the city manager to move forward with whichever direction we feel is appropriate, and then on the 17th or the 19th, we would then have an opportunity to discuss those discussions that have occurred between the park district and us. Alderman Bram?
Yeah, as, Mr. Mayor, you were just speaking, I was just wondering, is there any benefit of, and this is to the motion of a two-week and one-day postponement, of doing this next week, having a special meeting for this one item next week instead of waiting that additional week and a day?
I believe that, Alderman Kennedy, do you want to address that? Do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. I would take that from the standpoint that I don't believe that it's necessary. Calling a special meeting is usually held for very particular things and things that are of an urgent matter. This is definitely of an urgent matter, but not of the same level of urgency that the special meeting would normally be called for. So for us to do this, it makes sense. It also gives us an opportunity. It being an open meeting, the park district will probably have people here that'll understand our concerns, they'll hear our concerns. They'll have their meeting, and then we'll have our stormwater meeting after that, and hopefully, we'll be able to, before the 19th, come to a conclusion between both bodies anyways, and have a solution that everybody's gonna be able to agree to, and we'll be able to pass on Monday without it going back and forth again. Alderman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion as is. I'm fine with that. But I may be out of order here, I don't know. I have a question about the committee of the whole idea.
Go ahead.
Is that okay? As it's been communicated to me, both engineers, Christopher Burke and the V3 engineer, I forget, his name escapes me, have commented on the fact that the shut-off valve is not required. Is there any reason why we wouldn't have both engineers at the committee of the whole as opposed to just having Burke?
Because we have the contract with Burke Engineering Firm. The park district and school district have it with V3. If the park district is willing to bring forward them, I'm sure we could ask the city manager to ask the director to ask him if he would be willing to attend, and if he would be, I'm sure that that would be an appropriate thing to do. But we contract with Burke, that's why.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, Alderman Wagner, we're gonna extend an invitation to those folks, and if they'd like to come, we welcome them to be here. It is the opportunity, instead of having it just this discussion in committee, it's to present it to everyone up here on the dais, to hear the same information at one time, so it's fresh in everyone's mind, and then any questions that need to be asked can be either asked next Monday or in the time between that meeting and when we get together on the 19th.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thanks. Just a question for the committee. This particular concern about the shut-off valve, I'm wondering if it's the committee's opinion that this concern might be applicable or applied to all the other projects. We have four other ones we're in discussions with, with the park district.
Alderman Dunn? I would ask you to hold that for next week, for our committee of the whole meeting, because now we're on deferring the actual meeting of the resolution. So I would ask you to hold that for the next meeting, because we will have the engineer here for that meeting as well.
Okay, well, I would ask that the engineer would be, come prepared to address that particular question.
Okay. Any other questions? Clerk, call them up, roll.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Holmsky?
Aye.
York, absent, Toledo?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. That passes. That has been deferred now until the 19th. Just as a... Just as a final comment on that, we will be having a meeting next, a committee of the whole meeting next two, next Monday, sorry, next Monday at 6:30 before the committee meetings to discuss this typically, so that the public knows. Those committee of the whole meetings are typically recorded and put on Comcast as well as AT&amp;T, so everybody can view those if they're, if they would like to. So, that would be beneficial for people to be able to see what's going on and get, hear from the engineers directly. With that, is there any other business? Seeing none, I need a motion for adjournment. Alderman Healy, Alderman Wagner, all in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you.